All right, welcome everyone. Good evening. I hope everybody had no busted pipes and survived the freeze. Today is Monday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The time is six thirty. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and reflection?
Please bow your heads. Your heavenly Father, we come before you today seeking your guidance and wisdom in this meeting. We ask that your Holy Spirit be present among us, guiding our decisions so we can make the best choices for those who live in our city. We ask that you bless and protect our law enforcement officers and other first responders in our community. We also ask that you bless and protect all of our men and women in our armed forces who are serving both at home and overseas. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Do you want me to pledge to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. State of Texas, honor our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, did you take roll call seats? Or Scott?
Mayor Chris Barr.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mitch Davis. Councilmember Chris Ellis.
Present.
Councilmember Jared Reasoner.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Larry Sanders.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Francis.
Yeah.
Chief of Police Chief Carlisle. City Engineer Brett Phipps.
Here.
City Secretary Marie Campbell. City Administrator Scott Casserere.
Is here. Is this all the public comments we have?
Yes, sir, just one.
Okay, so with this time, we're going to move into item five, which is our public comments. I've got one. This is Michelle. Roll, roll over.
Yes.
I got it right?
Yeah.
You are welcome to come up to the podium now.
Thank you. Sorry, I've never done this. My name is Michelle Rommeler, and I live at two three zero two Flamingo Street in Roman Forest. Do I have to start?
Just wait out there.
Okay, all right. My husband and I moved to this neighborhood with our back kids about, about, it was about a year ago. And we had to ask community members at the time before we bought here about the ordinances related to own poultry in the neighborhood. And we'd been told by all of our friends and acquaintances in the neighborhood that while there are ordinances from the nineteen-sixties, you know, against poultry, but in general, those ordinances were antiquated and that they were not really followed. Many people in the neighborhood were allowed to have chickens. And so we got a coop and we had code enforcement show up at our door. We didn't even have chickens, just wood and fencing on a trailer. And we were told that we would need to go around to our neighbors and take like surveys or get written permission or something crazy like that and to actually receive permission from City Hall to own a chicken coop. We have over, we have almost an acre and a half of land privately. It's without a people's site. You know, it's not in the public view. I have all the space for it, so I'm not quite certain why I would have to do that. Also, I went around speaking to members of the community who had chickens and none of them that I've spoken to so far had had to do this requirement. Not one of them ever had to speak to a neighbor or submit documentation from a neighbor. Also, I'm not certain why a neighbor should be able to dictate the legality of what I do on my property from day to day. That seems like a big conflict of interest. So I'm just here trying to figure out what's required of me and try to figure out how to get these ordinances changed because there should be something uniform on the books that's dictated by law and not others' neighbors. And so that's what I'm here for today. I'm not quite certain who I'm asking for permission, but my four-year-old is really excited about chickens. And we've been told we might not be able to have them, so I'm not certain who to address or what to ask.
Chief, why don't you go ahead and give us some information on that?
It is against city ordinance to have chickens. And if we know about it, we may say something about it, especially if somebody complains. If we don't know about it, we just don't know about it. So, you know, that's, so if you know of five or six people that have their chickens, it's because we don't know about it. So I think I'm not soliciting a complaint either. You know, I don't, I'm not offended by chickens or anything, but if somebody complains to us, we've got to do our job. You talk to code enforcement, from my understanding?
They showed up at my door and talked to my husband. I did not speak to them.
Probably because you had a chicken coop in your front yard or something?
It was on a trailer and we're moving it to our yard.
Now, I don't know if it told you about getting neighbors' permissions or something, but...
Something about, my husband was trying to relay it to me, but it was like game of telephone. So like some sort of...
That would be a deed restriction you're talking about. That would be a deed restriction, but the city ordinance is either against the law or not against the law. If we knew about it, especially if you got a complaint, we could have knocked it on your door. Outside of that, we probably wouldn't have ever even known about it.
Probably not, but a lot of them.
And the people to get, to make the change?
Mm-hmm.
It is people, right?
Yeah, so the procedure would be you're welcome to bring a request to this council for a variance
Okay.
around the ordinance. You'd be allowed to do that.
Okay.
City council may or may not ask you to get letters from your neighbors. I don't know. That's up to them. But you're welcome. That would probably make your request, give you a better chance with it, if you had those letters from your neighbors.
What neighbors?
It would be the adjoining properties. And since you live with your backyard on the pipeline, you would probably have two, maybe three? I don't know what the other side of your property looks like. Probably three adjoining neighbors?
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and you can go a little bit further on that if you want to with the house bill that was in the state house last year. Was it last year or the year before?
Yes, so there has been two sessions in a row, and this is another session I don't know if it's being proposed, but there is an idea that the House and the Senate both like the idea, but they just can't agree on the details to get it passed into law. But they were going to, they had an attempt to make it to where cities cannot ban chickens.
And I haven't heard if that's coming up in the...
I haven't heard.
In this latest session, so. So yeah, you are welcome to schedule that with Mr. Castleberry or Marie, the city secretary, for the next regular council meeting. And we'd be glad to, to take, to take a vote on that, absolutely.
Okay.
There is an animal control ordinance that's out there in Minaco that we can get you to, you know, and it lays out what's permitted, what's not permitted. So then you can see the actual section that you want to get a variance on, which would be unfortunate.
Okay. Is there official documentation I need to bring or just attend a different session?
Just work with, come talk to the city administrator and he can get you everything you need to get on the agenda.
We'll figure it out.
The council can discuss things.
That's all I need, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, was that all we had? Scott?
That was it, yes, sir.
That was it? Okay, this time council is going to move into item six, which is our consent agenda items. Is there anything in this that needs to be voted on separately?
No, sir.
I don't think there is. Okay, so we're going to look at, consider and approve the minutes of the following council meetings, December ninth, twenty twenty-four. This was a regular city council meeting. Do you have a few moments to read over that? Also, we are reviewing special city council meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I'm going to go ahead and ask Chief Carlisle to come on up with his police report or wherever he's going to do it from while we are taking over these minutes. Go ahead, Chief.
Did you want me to go up here or are you okay?
I'm fine. Where do you want to stand? You're loud enough for this.
Just in case I'm not loud enough, I guess. All right. So we did purchase that Dodge Durango. It's the fastest one we've been able to be. And we didn't have to wait nineteen months for it, so we had it in six weeks or so. It's already been successfully integrated into our fleet. We're highly satisfied with the facility and the new vendor. I can't pronounce the Dodge dealership, but it's Win-Wiz Galski Dealership in Comro. Their team was exceptional, accommodating and demonstrated the utmost professionalism throughout their transition. So we have that vehicle. We are very happy. We've made significant process, progress in our, in our project to install flop cameras. We currently are waiting on installation on the majority of the locations, but we do have the two in the ground that the city will stay for, which is over on Galaxy between Roman Forest Boulevard and Long Street. All the others, there's three others in, but we're still waiting on the rest. The Roman Forest Police Department worked traffic control for the Tabola Deer Run. It's initiated, we do it every year, so it's just another successful year. I'm pleased to report that the toy truck for twenty twenty-four was a good success. We partnered with Kingwood College Latino Estrella Student Network for distribution. We did it from the St. John across Catholic Church right up here. We identified, this is our two hundred children, six, sixty-eight pre-identified local families. And we helped the association sponsor a deserving family from Dogwood Elementary to sponsor them with toys to get up to step on them. We're delighted to have been able to assist a family in need during the holidays, making the Children's Christmas joyful and memorable. So I thank the community for coming forward and helping us out with that. We do that every year, so hopefully we'll be able to do good next year, too. I'm pleased to announce that I've accepted a check for fifty thousand from the Tabola Community Foundation, and we have another fifty thousand coming in early twenty twenty-five. This crucial funding will be allocated to the expansion of the police department project. We are now fully staffed, yay. Fully staffed. We recently hired Tyrone Newsome, who has eight years' experience, so he's doing really well. His training right now should be done pretty soon, a couple more weeks. We purchased a twenty-twenty Chevrolet Tahoe with eighty-three thousand miles. So we got twenty-twenty with eighty-three thousand miles to replace the twenty-eighteen patrol vehicle that had over a hundred and ten thousand miles. We expect to, we expect it to be in service by the end of February. We've got, the constable had a wreck in twenty twenty, so we were able to get a few items out of that vehicle. Plus, we have the items that were took out of the loser's vehicle that was wrecked. And we're just going to add a little bit to it. We'll have a supplement to the insurance that will be way under that.
No payments. And no payments?
And no payments, no nothing.
So you can go ahead and say, "I told you so."
So we did well there. We don't have the final number yet, but so far we got, was it nineteen? It's what we paid for the vehicle, plus we got other things to pay for to get all the equipment installed and stuff. So it's definitely going to be up there. Scott Castleberry is now our Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator. I've been the, our Emergency Management Coordinator for over twelve years and still remains in that position. Chief and mayor notified the Texas Department of Emergency Management of mayor's appointment. This is mayor's appointment of Scott Castleberry as our Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator. This will give me assistance in my absence and other times when in need, so.
Is Bridge, yeah, that is, is Bridge prep for freezing? Is that part of this?
Yes.
Okay, three thirty a.m. I'll let you know when next time.
I agree there.
Yep.
All right, no, that, that's good. And Chief, and you have always done a great job because when anyone asks me, I always say, "Chief is my Emergency Management Coordinator." He is, but he has to have an assistant.
Yeah, I've never known when and where I'm going to be, so it's good to have something falling around that can handle things. So something I didn't provide in the report, but I do want to talk about is, well, I want to say I did talk to our maintenance supervisor about the sign up here. He says that it's definitely causing a drainage issue. It's always soupy, and that's the thing he's waiting on. It needs to dry for five months before he can start demolishing it. So, so it is causing problems with the drainage and stuff like that, so. Once we get that estate signed, that'll dry up. It's just a matter of getting him in there. That's why it's still up there. He's trying to wait for it to dry up.
In preparation for our next workshop with Engineer Phipps, I had the drainage supervisor out there. That's one of the things he, from the county, that's one of the things he pointed out. That is an issue, so. Yeah, so since you can get it out there, that needs to be done.
Yeah, I talked to him today about it. He said it's still really soupy over there. Hopefully, he did try, he is going to try to save some components of it, but he said not likely, but he'll try.
Okay.
And the other thing I want to mention is, and I'm looking to see if I need to put it on the agenda for a real discussion, so I'm not asking for discussion. But if anybody after the meeting thinks I need to put it up for discussion, let me know so that we can get it on the agenda. But we have that fuel max fixing to get there finalized on the permits and everything. We have this plant over here that has the same thing. We have a couple duplexes over here that have the same thing, but these trash container, like dumpster. What do you, what do you call it?
Hauls.
The container cover.
Screening.
Screening, whatever. So it, it, our previous code enforcement officer brought it to, this is my confusion. She brought it to our council for variance for somebody to have a fence variance. To me, I don't think a dumpster enclosure is a fence. I think when you're talking about the fence, our fence ordinance, you're talking about the outermost fence of your property. And it says it has to be wood. It can't be metal. And these doors, and I've driven around New Caney, Porter, Cleveland, even Roman Forest, the doors are made out of metal. And the ones that are made out of wood, like fence, fall apart really quick because they're constantly opening and closing. So my confusion is apparently she was asking for a fence variance, and I believe that might have been a mistake. And y'all denied a fence variance for that reason. In my opinion, that's not a fence. It's a door for the enclosure. So if y'all will talk to me after the meeting, tell me if we need to discuss this, or is my interpretation correct? If we do need to discuss it, we're going to need to hold up fuel max and a clinic to these duplexes. I'd have to go visit them with a violation letter. So let me, let me know after the meeting because I'm not asking for discussion.
Yep.
If nobody comes to me, I'm just going to go ahead and say that my interpretation is right.
Just discussion, not giving you any opinion here, but I did do some research after we talked, so I do have an opinion on what we should do, so.
You think it's beyond the agenda?
We'll talk about it.
Right, that's all I have. If anybody wants me to go over stats, Ken? You good?
Thanks, they're good, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, you got the maintenance permit and financial there, not just for review, but under the topic, do you want to speak on it or is it just there for review?
It's all there for your...
So council, let's take a look at the maintenance report, court report and permit reports. They are presented to you for review. If you have any questions, council, time to pass. All right, any questions, council, on maintenance court or permit reports? Okay, let's move on to financial report. This is still under consent. Go ahead, Scott. Our report. Marie? You're, you're up.
It's just me.
It's just Marie. Okay, let's go ahead and take a look at financial report, council. I'm going to give you a little extra time on that. Okay, council, any questions on any of those, like financial report? All right, moving on to the city administrative.
Hello, dear microphone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, come on in. Let's talk about community relations first. The events committee hosted donuts and coffee community gathering here on Saturday, January the eleventh. Talkus came out and sponsored it, also provided information for residents that needed information on getting the service or had questions about their service. We had about fifty community residents show up for the event. It was a very good, successful event for Roman Forest. Also, the events committee, we have the Christmas yard decorating judging was done Sunday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The top three winners were given gift cards from the events committee and replaced signs in their yards. The judges who were all from outside of Roman Forest remarked about how festive our community is and how they look forward to judging again next year. On Saturday, February eighth, the events committee will host a lunch and bingo here at City Hall at noon. And then on Sunday, February twenty-third, there is going to be a car show with other festivities up at the park. And there was not a time listed for that. Did you have a time?
We're still working on the details.
Still working on the time, okay. The city administration, we started a comprehensive emailing list about three or four weeks ago where people could sign up. In fact, there's a list over here tonight if you haven't signed up, where you put your name and your email. And this for people that don't have Facebook and just aren't connected that way. And I send out emails. It's got about seventy-something people right now. I'm just sending out, there's a council meeting tonight or there's this coming up. But it's just a way for people that do not get information through social media to be able to get information from the city. So if you haven't signed up and you would like to, it's the paper on the right over here. We'd love for you to sign up. So today, Chief Carlisle and Mr. Ellis and I met with Energy today. And that was about the, the energy poles that they're wanting to put up on our Boulevard. And we're trying to make that change so that our city doesn't want high wires down Roman Forest Boulevard. So we had met with them back in October, November, and made an agreement to go back and see what they could do to help change something in the direction of what we were asking for. And the project manager, Justin, showed up today and he came in and he does have a solution for us that we think benefits the city. For all of you that are, that got letters from Energy that live on the Boulevard in here tonight, they were asking to buy up sixteen-foot easement into your yard to put that. Some of you would have got the pole with the high wires through it, which would have taken down some of your trees and, you know, basically hurt your property value. So what they are going to come back and offer is they're going to offer to buy ten feet of easement, not sixteen feet, and go underground. There's still a spot that's up by the, the bridge where there will be a high wire that comes across from the Tabola side, but then it will go underground before it hits, is that Flamingo right there, Chief?
No.
It's here.
Cherry.
Before it gets to Cherry, and then it will come down the right side and then cross over where the high wires already go across. And then it will go down the left side of the Boulevard down to Appian at the Dollar General store and then go down Appian. Appian will have high wires down there. It will not be underground. But we did get them to talk about, have that discussion, moving it to underground on the Boulevard. And what's going to happen is we're going to get a list of everybody that's on the Boulevard and we're going to get a letter together and we're going to come by and drop it off personally and explain it so that, so that the resident understands that you're not selling your property. You're selling an easement. You're selling the underground part. All they own is what goes in under the ground. They're not owning the front ten feet into your yard. So will the costs be a little different, what they're going to offer? Yes, it will be a little bit different for those of you that got offers last time. It will be lower this time. But as we spoke today, I think if I lived on the Boulevard, I would take the less money just to be happy to, we're not going to have the high wires and the poles coming through your yards. There will be parts, some houses will have green boxes that will end up in your front yard, kind of like a talkus box is in the ground. These will be in your yard. If you drive over by my house over on Four Fountains, I got a huge one in my yard, but those are just necessities, the things that we're going to have to have. And I think it was a great trade-off for us to have, to be able to take a few green boxes down the Boulevard that we won't even realize are there in a month over having high wires that we'll see daily. we won't even realize are there in a month, over having high wires that we'll see daily going up and down the Boulevard. So, it was a fight worth fighting, we think that that's the way that this is gonna end up. He was going back to talk to an engineer for Energy about the, that front part by the pool where Gordon Miller's office is, about where that's gonna start. But, other than that, Chief, am I missing anything, Charles?
No, I think you covered it. The riser boxes are gonna be, have to be necessity, and what they're doing is they're bringing more reliable power into the substation on Apollo. The risers are gonna be necessity, and what they're doing is they're bringing more reliable power, and it's gonna be going to the substation on Apollo. He was saying that it's gonna, you know, hopefully take care of the outage situations that we had, probably won't stop, but hopefully reduce.
Reduce. What he said that was really, what we all liked was, instead of a hundred houses going out, it knocks it down to where it's a smaller number if electricity does go out, and then they're able to get to it and fix it a lot quicker. Okay? So, anyway, that's where we're at with Energy. If you're on the Boulevard, we will be behind the next week, we're just waiting on how they want us to put the letter to you, but if you have one of the old offers that they sent you, that's null and void now, they are gonna come out with a new offer to you, so. And lastly, January the 8th, Backstreet Woodman was here, and we held our first task force meeting. Backstreet Woodman is the group that's doing the comprehensive plan for the city. And there were people there with business owners, New Caney ISD was here, and there were city residents represented from a year being here all the way up to over 40 years of being here. Lot of, lot of conversation, things about what Roman Forest is looking for in the future. Tomorrow, there's gonna be a survey that's gonna go out, and for those of you on my mailing list, you'll get that, you'll get that QR code in the email. Other than that, we'll put it on the city Facebook page, and anybody that has one of the other Facebook pages that wants to, what's that called?
Share.
Share, thank you. I fixed it to retweet.
I'm sure.
When you share, yes, then other people might see that are on city with their own one of the other ones, and if worse comes to worse, and you don't have any way to do it with a QR code off of your phone, you can come up here, I'll print you a copy off, it's 25 questions, and I'll print you a copy, and you can do it, and I'll put it in for you manually, but we'll figure out, if you don't have a way to come up there, we'll figure out a way to help you get that so that everybody has a voice if they wanna have a voice. And the questions are just things about your opinion about Roman Forest, and there's not a name on it, there's not an address on it, we're not stalking you some way through a code or anything, so it is just your opinion. So those will go out, and they actually will stay open until the 21st. On February the 5th, there's gonna be a community open house here, led by the current Kristen from Backstreet Woodman, and what that is, is all the things that they've gathered up to that point, and they'll be able to come in, they'll be able to look at some of the things that they put together and ask questions at all of the people that have been on those committees since we started, will also be here to have input if you have questions, as you can, I think she said it's gonna be set up where you can go around the room and look at different parts of it. But that is on February the 5th here at City Hall from 5:00 to 7:00 at night. So, look for those surveys, and that is all I have to add. How are you even sure that the surveys are being completed by Roman Forest residents if it's one place? And that's just where she asked us to do, and she said that there will be people that fill out one that's not from, probably Roman Forest, and she understood that's just part of the only way to get things out now. Otherwise, she said, doing it by paper is just not feasible right now. So that's why she wanted to do it through a Facebook post to get it out, but I'm gonna send most of it out by email, most of the people, like I said, I got 70 people on an email list right now that are gonna get, they don't have to do it that way, that I would say are Roman Forest residents, but even that, they could, they could assign that in one of the events, and I won't even open up a Roman Forest resident, I don't hope I can check. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Questions from the audience? Do we take questions from the audience? We are taking questions from the audience.
I have a question about the interview.
About what?
About the interview with the lines we want to land. Why can't they put it down in the Boulevard in the middle? Why do they have to come into our houses?
There are rules by, federal guidelines of why they can't come down the middle of the Boulevard.
They answered it, it was something like that.
Yeah, I did say it today.
How do you ask that question here?
Well, you know, but, you know, my concern as to that, with those lines, and Jerry had even made a comment about that, they are very hot, you know, when they're underground, so whether they help dangerous us?
Their lines are not two feet under the ground like what Tocas is, their lines go 10 feet.
Well, I hope so. I mean, what's gonna happen, like with our property, we'll probably lose every tree still.
Same here.
Our trees. They'll have to, if they're gonna, just somebody can't piece or whatever for them to be able to put that line, we probably will lose every tree.
No, you won't. Because they won't. I asked that question today, and you said they won't touch a root of a tree, that's how far down they're gonna be when they...
Why don't they can, they can dig up a trench?
It's not a trench above ground, they're gonna tunnel.
Tunnel.
Yours was the yard that I used as my example. And I, and I, and I did, I talked about that, and talked about some of your oaks in your front yards, and your trees are 100 years old, which, you know, there's special rules for that too. So, no, he said they won't touch any of the roots of those trees.
Any other questions, Council, for Scott on any of the reports? Thank you, Scott, you covered events already, should you be? Okay, Council, everything under consent agenda, I don't see, will be voted to approve.
Minutes.
Minutes, December 9th, Minutes, January 13th, police report, maintenance report, court report, permit report, financial report, city administrator report, and event committee report as presented. So I just need a motion, second, and a vote to approve consent agenda.
I make a motion, accept the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders to accept consent agenda items as presented. Do I have a second? Councilman Reesner seconds, all in favor of approval, show it as unanimous. Moving on to item seven, discuss, consider, status of the following projects, take any action required. Mr. Phipps, sure?
Good evening, Council. I don't have a whole lot to report, other than we are working for this, what was started at the last meeting, looking at the different drainage questions and concerns that have been raised, and so we are working towards that, and we'll have that at the February meeting.
So with that being said, so you're good for a February, are you good for a February workshop on that particular topic?
Yeah, if you wanna do it a week ahead and have a council workshop on it, we can be ready.
Okay, I'll, I'll get Council, we'll do that a little bit, we'll set that date. Go ahead, sir. Any questions? Questions for Mr. Phipps? Go ahead, sir.
We had, I keep bringing up Hubbard Park, was because of the drainage issues, and I was out there, drove around, had to put my truck in four-wheel drive, you gotta do it every so often, and the four-wheel drive died, and you could see some water in areas out there that were pooling on some of the parks. And so I was wondering if there's any update on looking at that area for drainage, any further?
We have, that's one of the things that we are looking at, although, as far as the drainage goes, although our focus is more on the roadside itches, getting the drainage out of there. Hubbard is, I know there's been a lot of discussion about improvements on Hubbard, and that would, if Council wants us to do something before then, we certainly can, but it was, we were looking more to handle Hubbard as a standalone park type of project, not inclusive, or included inside of this drainage. We'd be happy to do it, but that's, if you had complaints from the neighbors that there were issues in their backyard from the surface, okay, but I'm not working anything that's from the neighbors.
I don't think we should change any plans that we currently have, because that would put us off track for, hurry and cope, and to look to have that as a standalone, we could bring it up, because, you know, we're a year into it now. So, just trying to make sure it doesn't get forgotten.
Hubbard is not forgotten.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question here, with Hubbard Park on the drainage, have we had any complaints on the drainage to the residents of the...
Not that I've been working.
I haven't seen any on the emails.
We haven't had any? Okay.
I haven't seen any, but that is gonna be a separate, that is a separate.
I understand that, but if we have that problem, then we need to address it now, too.
Absolutely, yes, sir. While we're on the subject of drainage, I'd like to make sure everybody can, let's set a drainage workshop, engineer, city council for the 17th, that is Monday night, that's 17th of February, and 6 p.m. Does that conflict with anything y'all have, Scott?
I think that's, might be the Monday when they have the mid-winter break at the school district?
It's a holiday.
That's President's Day that day.
I think it is a holiday, didn't think about that, but it is Monday, not, I mean, it's at night, so.
I was only two thoughts.
Okay, Council, everybody get with that?
That's our next council meeting, isn't it?
No?
No. 24th is the 24th.
Next meeting.
Yes, sir.
So it'll be one week for the regular meeting. We get on this side, Council?
Yeah, what time is that again?
6:00 p.m.
What's the workshop for?
This is for, this is the, this is the final workshop for the drainage projects. A lot of what's in section four, for sure. This is more of a sit-down, city council and city engineer to discuss costs, timetables, timelines with the county to correspond some projects that the commissioner's doing. Alright, okay, so we'll set that meeting for that date. Any other questions for Mr. Phipps? Scott, do you need him on any of the next few line items? Do we need him for number 12?
No, sir.
Okay. Council, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna go ahead and tell Mr. Phipps he can retire for the...
I think we've all voted for that.
Yes, sir. Okay, Council, moving on to item eight, discuss and approve the resignation. Tiana Sanford, city prosecutor, city of Roman Forest. I think we have the resignation letter here. Thank you, Greg. So, just a motion, second, a vote to accept the resignation, city prosecutor, Tiana Sanford.
Motion to accept her resignation.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders to accept the resignation, position of city prosecutor of Tiana Sanford, do I have a second? Councilman Reesner seconds, all in favor of accepting the resignation, show it as unanimous. Item nine, discuss and approve hiring Carmen Morales as a city prosecutor for the city of Roman Forest. Is Ms. Morales here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And I understand that Judge Brian Stanley has recommended her for this particular job?
Yes, sir.
Council, do we have any questions for Ms. Morales, comes with the appointment, blessing of our municipal judge? So I'll leave it to Council to see if we can go any further, or are we ready for a vote on this?
I'm good. I'll go ahead and make a motion that Carmen Morales would be the city prosecutor.
Okay, motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders to hire Carmen Morales as the city prosecutor for city of Roman Forest, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Second, Councilman Varden, all in favor, show it as unanimous. Alright, and so at this time, Carmen, you get to come over up here, get sworn in, does she have a copy that she... I gotta find the right paper.
You're about to have to buy lunch, Scott.
I thought I was getting lunch tomorrow.
Carmen, do you live close by?
No, sir, I live in Willis. I'm one of the assistant district attorneys in Conroe, and I'm also the legislative liaison for Henry County.
Okay. Alright. Okay, Ms. Morales, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Carmen Morales.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of prosecutor?
The duties of the office of prosecutor.
Of the city of Roman Forest.
Of the city of Roman Forest.
And I will to the best of my ability?
And I will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
What? What, move forward.
Thank you very much.
He has to sign that.
Yeah, we gotta say that you're...
And I'll get him, I'll get that and turn it into Judge Stanley.
There you go.
Now we gotta get Judge Stanley.
Can you name anything for me? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. No, Taylor's covering, I'm leaving to Austin this afternoon morning, so. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Council, let's go to item 10. Discuss, consider, approving ordinance 545-25. This is an ordinance by the state council, city of Roman Forest commending the city's operating budget for FY 2024-25. Give a second, give Council an explanation on this, Scott?
Yes, sir. These are line items in the budget that were not rolled over through the 24 budget that were accounted for in the 24 budget, but when it was approved, did not roll over to the 2024 budget. The money's been accounted for, and it's in the, it's in the pool of money that we have, it's just, for some reason, these did not get rolled over into the 25 budget, and so we are asking tonight that you do a budget amendment and roll these over to the 2025
Give the Council a little time to look over, review these.
Scott, if either we're not rolling over, but we have had the funds allocated already into the budget, how did we allocate not having this stuff rolled over?
If we didn't roll the money over, some of those projects that this is for, wouldn't be able to, would not happen.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if the money was allocated from 24, not 25, or was allocated from 25? What, what I'm trying to say, if we have the, if we're adding to the budget, or minimum of the budget?
Yes, sir.
And then get carried over, but we had the money in the budget for it, and how did we account for it in the 25 budget when it wasn't in the...
The money was accounted for... The money was accounted for in twenty-four, but should have rolled to twenty-five, I was not at, nor was Ms. Campbell at, those meetings when they adopted this budget, so we're just trying to make sure that the things that were projects that the money was there for are still able to finish those projects in twenty-five that they did not do in twenty-four.
Okay, I see, I understand.
Make sense? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Castleberry on this amendment? Okay, I would just need a motion, second of vote to, um, approve ordinance five, four, five, dash, two, five, as written.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, I make a motion, uh, that we approve, uh, ordinance, here's the number on the menu.
Five, four, five, dash, two, five.
Five, four, five, dash, two, five.
Okay, motion on the floor, Councilman Reesner, to accept, approve ordinance five, four, five, dash, two, five, as written, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, Councilman Sanders, any other discussion on this, council? All in favor of approval, show it as unanimous. Item eleven, discuss and approve updated ver- verbiage on ordinance four, two, five, dash, two, four. Whose was this one, Scott?
Yes, sir. This was a, an ordinance that was approved actually in September, and there was verbiage that was, I guess, talked about, I thought it would, and, uh, Mr. Francis put together, added that verbiage in for, uh, the homeowners and the, uh, basically where they can use their homestead not to have to get certain things, uh...
Inspected.
inspected, thank you.
Got you.
And there was just new verbiage added to that on, uh, section two, and then again on section six.
That's why this is city inspections, not, uh, other state, my, state required inspections.
Or city inspections, okay, good. On to council, any questions concerning amendments to out, uh, ordinance four, two, five, dash, two, four, we'll throw the vote on it. I would just need a motion, second of vote to approve the amendments. Motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the updated verbiage for ordinance four, two, five, dash, two, four.
Okay, motion on the floor, Councilman Ellis, to approve the updated verbiage for ordinance four, two, five, dash, four, as presented, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, Councilman Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor of approval? One, two, three, I've got, uh, Councilman Ellis, Councilman Sanders, Councilman Reesner, four, uh, four, do I have against? Okay, we've got Councilman Pardon, against, motion carries three votes. Moving on, council, to item twelve, discuss and approve the city administrator to accept the bid to fix the leaks in the swimming pool, resurface the pool, and resurface the splash pad.
Yes, sir.
We got a few conversations about this.
Yeah, um...
Go ahead.
So, we went out and got some of the bids, first of all, because we needed to get, we have to get a leak test down on the pool that apparently has been leaking for at least two or three years, uh, when, uh, when I got here, uh, how I found out that this was a problem because of the, the water bill at the park was so high, and then, uh, Mr. Reeves brought me the quotes that have been given to city administration over the last couple of years where it needed to be looked at and the leak test needed to be done, find out why that water bill's so high, and, um, they just put them away, so when we went back and asked these people to give us a quote again, one or two of them even said, this will be the last time we get a quote from them, they've, uh, they've, they've been giving them and giving them, but it's the same thing every year, it seems, so, uh, the amount of money that we're spending on the water at the pool, um, is just unbelievable, um, so what we did is we went out and we got people to give us a quote for, one, the leak test on the pool, but then, two, the pool needs to be resurfaced because there are cracks in the pool, it does need to be resurfaced, and the splash pad, which was put in in, I don't know what year, eighteen, seventeen, um, hasn't even looked like it had resurfaced in a while either, so, for the safety of the kids that play on it, that needs to be resurfaced also, so we went out and we got bids, and that page, in front of you, you'll see, uh, the four different bids, we did get a fifth bid just on the splash pad, but I would like to hire a company to do all the things as one and not different ones, so that way, we have that, those bids that you see are for a five-year warranty, I did not bring you a one-year warranty, I didn't think that was beneficial to the city, didn't do us any good if something goes wrong in year two, uh, so, those bids that you see are for a five-year on the pool, the splash pad though is only, uh, one or two years, uh, for that resurfacing. But what I'm asking for is for the right to get the leak test done and then hire a, hire a company to come out and take care of that work. Should there be problems, the leak is not where we think it is, then it might be a project that we have to postpone because there's not money for that at this time, but, uh, right now, that's, what we're asking for is just for me to have the ability to hire somebody to be able to do that work, to provide a certain amount of money, uh, I think that council's approved.
Have, uh, have we spoke to M-CIT about, um, helping with this project if we did not to?
We have not talked to them yet, I've talked to Mr. McGrady a couple of times informally, but we were putting a formal note together this week to talk to him about, hopefully, uh, funding up to a certain percentage, um, I think that, I can see M-CIT doing that, funding some of it, which would be very beneficial to the city, and some of that money that was there, uh, especially the money that was earmarked back for the park area, we can use still for park.
I have a question here. Over the last several months, I've heard something about the pump pad motor needs to be replaced, are we going to include all that into the same thing, or does that pump pad motor need to be replaced?
Mr. Reeves is here, I'm gonna go through that.
Which pump are you talking about, I have three of them up there.
The one for the, uh, splash pad.
Splash pad, it, it, it's running, well, not that one we had to cut off, but it has been running, and it ran each one.
So, so, so it does not need to be replaced?
Not at this moment, yeah, I haven't started it up for the season, I haven't started for the season, it's finished, yeah.
Okay.
Without, they're not my kitchen, answer that through.
Okay, because I was just, if we was going to have a problem, maybe we'll fix it at the same time.
Right. That's not included in any of these questions, I think.
Yes, sir.
So, so, two questions.
Yes, sir.
What is your estimate of how much money we will save a month by doing this repair? Well, that water bill on an average, just for the pool, on average, is eight hundred dollars, some months it's eleven hundred dollars, some months it's six hundred dollars, and that's even in the winter when we're not even having kids in the pool and there's not an evaporation coming from, uh, the environment, so, I mean, you're talking ten thousand dollars you're spending on water estimated up at the pool right now, that we shouldn't have to spend, that has that, that's much. Twenty percent of...
Yes, sir.
Maybe fifteen percent of the, of the repair cost.
Yes, sir.
So, so for five years, it would actually get that money back, so, so, I guess my bigger question is, where's this money gonna come from? That money comes from, if you look at some of those line items that were, went forward and not, there's money that was designated for the park, pool, and, uh, splash pad back when Harvey happened, that's still there, so we're gonna be able to use some of that money for that, and then there's also, um, money in...
Yeah, capital.
Capital outlay that was for the park also, that went and rolled over from last year to this year. Is that money for pool house that they were saving for? Uh, yes, sir, that's what, it was a capital outlay out of, it's just been, but hopefully we don't have to use that, we've got enough with the other from the Harvey, and then if we can get M-CIT to come in on that, then we won't have to touch that part of it, that's the plan. Okay. So you got, uh, multiple bids here, is, is there one that you've chosen as your purpose? Haven't chosen one, but if I had a preference, the, uh, top one that you see, is a local company, and so I would really like to use the local company, and we've had references on them, uh, Mr. Reeves has talked to them, and that would be the one I would, uh, recommend if I was gonna recommend it, why? And what would be the impact to the pool to do the repair? Like, so how does it impact our pool season if they, if we proceed with this, whether you get it done before the pool season? Yeah, it starts, that's, that's why we're asking right now in January so that we can do the leak test and figure out just to the extent, if the extent is so big that we have to come back to you, then we might need to have to talk about other, uh, alternatives, but right now it's doubtful we're trying to do, in fact, uh, one of the companies that came, they think the leak might just be in some of the skimmers, help me out with verbiage or, uh...
If it's in the skimmer, the resurfacing will fix that. Now, if they press the test lines and then, uh, the concrete, that, like you said, that's when we gotta come back to you, if I had to get, up here.
If it involves tearing up the concrete up there and doing other things, then I'll come back and talk to you again, and we'll have to re-evaluate what we're gonna do, because then it might not be cost worthy to people we're talking about.
More to this than any other questions, council?
Scott, I, I see the difference in prices, I know Everest is barely, pretty much cheaper, like twelve thousand dollars, am I right? But I see, I see it very cheaper.
They got two that are within a thousand dollars of each other, they got two that are thirty thousand dollars more offered through the same guarantee for the same work.
Okay.
The two bids you're looking at, the two, that was a package deal.
That was a what, I'm sorry?
A package deal, I guess, if you let us do it all, we'll do it for this price, but if you go break down this stuff, there, there bid, probably go up.
Well, I'm saying two bids for Everest, that's my math.
No, it's, it's... Yeah, it's ever after, and the splash pad was probably roughly seventeen, eighteen thousand, so...
It says, when, when, we...
No, it's second.
So what exactly is it you're asking us to give me? To give me permission, because it's over fifty thousand dollars, to be able to get the leak test done, and if they determine that we can fix it for this amount and get all this other, that, that we will do it for that price.
Given him permission, city administrator to spend up to that amount only, he would come back to us if they find other issues here to leak test.
Correct, and if there are other issues, and we have to tear out cement, then I know the price was way up, and we would cut back and talk.
Is there enough money in those two funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we're looking for M-CIT, right?
Yes, sir.
So if all else tells, we have the money to do it, but we're trying to outsource some of the money to?
We're trying to get some of our, uh, money back that goes to M-CIT out of our, uh, businesses and our community, yes, sir?
Sure, yeah.
I would just remind them too, it's, it's not just a pool for Roman Forests, it's, he offers the whole drainage from here, so it's not, not just benefiting us. No, sir.
M-CIT knows that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, council, are you all ready to, uh, move on this?
So, do we need to, uh, make a motion with the dollar amount of sixty-six or twenty-five?
I'm thinking so, that's probably...
Mayor, a motion that we, uh, we approve the city administrator to spend up to sixty-six thousand twenty-five dollars, um, to fix, uh, leaks in the swimming pool, resurface the pool, resurface the splash pad.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Pardon, to give city administrator the authority to spend up to sixty-six thousand twenty-five dollars for resurfacing, repair of pool, resurfacing of pool, and resurfacing of the splash pad, do I have a second?
I have a question.
Uh, after, after the second, we can go into discussion. Second, Councilman Reesner, any other discussion, council?
How much do we make from the swimming pool every year? How, how much of the deficit is that?
I think that's the right question.
That is a good question, I do not have an answer for you tonight on how much money that brings in, however, I can get you that answer.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
We don't profit.
We don't profit, or miss you.
I know we don't profit, I just want to know what type of deficit we're in, and how many residences, residences, residents actually use the pool, you know, that's...
I'll get you that information.
I'll get you, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilman Pardon, we have a second on the floor to that motion from Councilman Reesner, any other discussion? All in favor of approval? So, it unanimous. When you get that, Mr. Castleberry, send it out as an information to the council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there is no need for item thirteen, let's move on to fourteen, city council's request, future agenda items, council? Our next regular meeting will be on the twenty-fourth with a workshop on the seventeenth.
Uh, next, I'm thinking maybe, uh, discuss and consider, um, with the flawed cameras that we looked into policy about pursuits or chases, uh, within the city limit, city of Roman Forests.
I said those policies. Hmm? I said those policies, you can talk to me about it.
Might, if that's something that you want discussed, to open council, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Give with, uh, you, you're gonna do the online request?
Yeah, I can do that.
Did you send that to, to Mr. Castleberry and he'll, he'll be able to take care of it? Other requests, future agenda items?
I'd like to place, that we have, we create a committee on Hubbard Park to develop a cost, what's the cost to do that job?
Uh, one of the committees that was formed was the, tell me, I, too?
Uh, we have a parks committee that we're, uh, that we're in the process of forming.
Okay, that's where he's going with this, so, there's your man you need to talk to on that, that was, that was already authorized.
Oh, that was already, I haven't heard of that being authorized, I'm...
Oh, I'm with you, with you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a parks committee that, uh, several months ago, they assigned me and Tim to select those committee members, and, uh, I've already identified the chairman of that.
Okay, because I know, there was a letter went out requesting members who wanted them, and I haven't heard anything since then, so, I, I think we need to move forward with that because people are asking that, and, um, to get some cost going there, we may, we may not be able to do anything, but we needed to see what type of cost, or what type of, uh, grant money is available for everybody's places, spots, or whatever, we, we need to work on that.
I got a, I got one chairman identified to, uh, to do that, and then we just need a couple more members, so, uh, I was not privy to the responses to that letter.
Okay.
That was Tim, so we can come through his email probably, that probably will be.
I know there were several people... I know there were several people requesting to be on that committee.
I have to go through the email for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other requests, future agenda items, counsel? All right, events, things we are coming up? Anybody got any announcements on that? Scott talked about it, but y'all are welcome to, to tell us again, absolutely.
There's a sign from Bingo on February eighth and the car show on February twenty-third. Of course, this weekend, January thirtieth through the second, would be our bi-monthly community yard sale, designs of the web. Which, then we also have in March, on Tuesday, March fourth, the events committee's going to meet. If anybody's interested in joining and helping us with any of the projects, join us here at City Hall at five-thirty on March fourth. Then Saturday, March fifteenth, we're planning, weather permitting, this year, St. Patty's Day at the Pavilion and Park, and we'll be, one of the committee, at the committee, we'll plan activities for that. Sunday, March thirtieth, we're hoping to have a tailgate chili cook-off at the park. Rules and activities for that will follow as we develop them. Then April fourth through the sixth will be the next bi-monthly community garage sale weekend. People post their own signs and their locations on the Facebook pages, and we're hoping and working with the Parks Committee, but the Garden Club, that's Saturday, April twelfth. We're shooting to have our park beautification project, to do some power volunteers helping with power washing, getting ready for hopefully the opening of the pool by the end of May. And then, once we have a date for pool opening and knowing how that's going, then we'll plan, if it's redone, then a grand reopening of the park as a, as a project that the events committee will do.
All right.
So that's as far as we've gotten so far.
That's, that's a ways, that's good, thank you. Is there a chance you could put that schedule on the events committee Facebook page?
Deanna, our prayers are to Deanna, she's had her, I hope it's okay to say, she had her gallbladder surgery today, so that's why she's not here. And so we're hoping for a good recovery from that, and then she's the administrator, so I haven't been able to get in and post it. But I gave a copy to Marie and Scott, so it can, this list can go in his emails, and as soon as I get with Deanna, we can then get it, those dates, you know, save the date post, and the bingo flyer on the websites.
Okay. Mayor, do we need to put something on the agenda, or on the next month's agenda, or somewhere down there, within the next six months, about our entrance? What we talked about, the arches down there, we're going to remove them, we're going to resurface them, or what we're going to do? Do we need to, I don't know when we want to do that?
I don't see that it's a priority within the next couple of months.
I agree there.
Yeah, so I think let's keep it in our mind, and let's, let's definitely, I know about when it's going to be the right time to bring that back out, and hopefully we can get some good discussion on it.
Okay.
All right, counsel, because that's it, I just get a motion to adjourn for the evening.
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting, believe me?
Motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, to adjourn for the evening, seconded all the week by Councilman. All in favor of adjournment? It is unanimous, the time is seven forty-five, and this meeting is closed.